For reading, light reading.
Light reading. I've written a couple, but I'd like to get a little cord on my top of the shirts. So.
All right, the board's 6:30, so let's, uh...
I have an announcement, other announcements.
Sounds good. So we'll call this meeting to order at 6:30. Yeah, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. Hi.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Craig here. Felton here.
Quan here.
Carter here.
Thomas here.
Very good. We have a quorum with Mr. Schneider and Mr. Yurisiewski. Uh, I have in front of me verification of the proper meeting notice being posted, which then takes us to the action of the agenda. We will be adding announcements from Mr. Craig under announcements. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Oh, just that we sent out that amended agenda early in the week, which ended a closed session, and then we expanded Sarah's board report for the law conference to add a couple other items, so just want to know those things.
Mr. Schneider, and let's take a motion to approve the agenda.
Cummings will make that motion to approve the agenda as stated with the additional added information.
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, we'll move on to the stack of minutes we have to address. So we're looking to approve the meeting minutes from April 9th from our regular board meeting. If you have any additions or corrections to those minutes.
I have one. I did not nominate Sue Kwame for president.
Well, that's a different, that's a different set of minutes. That's, that's the 28th April 28th.
My bad. Oh, that's right. You're right.
I noted that as well.
I didn't have any other changes.
April 9th regular meeting. Cummings will make a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from April 8th.
Good. All those in favor of approving the regular meeting minutes from April 9th?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, moving on to the closed session meeting minutes from April 9th. Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I approve.
Incoming's the second.
All those in favor of approving those meeting minutes?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Then we have the meeting minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee on April 21st.
I will move for approval.
I'll say.
All those in favor of approving the Building and Grounds Committee meeting minutes, committee meeting minutes from April 21st?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, then we have the Finance Committee meeting minutes from April 22nd. Anybody have additions or corrections to those minutes?
I'll approve those meeting minutes.
I will say.
All those in favor of approving the April 22nd Finance Committee meeting minutes?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, Jeremy, now we're to the one. The meeting minutes from our special board meeting, April 28th.
Not a good, not a good. All right, I did see one correction in there. Uh, Sarah Cummings nominated Sue Kwame for President Kwame.
I felt like something else was incorrect.
Well, the, Sue, are you on the Personnel Committee now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that, how they have it there.
Okay.
Any other additions or corrections to those meeting minutes? All right, so we'll take a motion to approve them as amended, corrected.
Cummings will make that motion with the amended changes.
I'll say.
All those in favor of approving the special board meeting minutes from April 28th as noted?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Then we have the meeting minutes from special board meeting, April 28th, closed session.
I'll approve those.
Cummings, second.
All those in favor of approving the April 28th closed session meeting minutes?
Aye.
Okay, we have made it through meeting minutes, which brings us to board reports. I don't see...
We don't have our student reps tonight.
Laura and Teresa, yeah.
Yeah, it's gone, so if either Jeremy or Charlie want to speak on Building and Grounds.
Did we want to do the presentation to the board, the Booster Club, before that? Where is that on the agenda?
Oh, yeah, I got ahead of myself, sorry, Susan.
It's right after approval of minutes.
Thank you, Sarah. That would be... Mrs. Sefalo is here to present for us.
Yes, so hopefully in your packet you have a list of businesses. So first two columns are the businesses you approved last year, and we're adding more because businesses get added or we discovered new ones that we left off since last year was our first one. Hopefully there will be fewer and fewer each year that we missed, but the ones that sponsored the Booster Club last year are bolded. Wasn't too bad. We consider the program pretty successful. We made about $5,000 in sponsorships, which only very slightly affected our, the fundraising night in the spring. So last year we made $7,000 on our fundraising night. This year we made six, but when you add the $5,000 from the beginning of the year, because most of those businesses will generally sponsor during the fundraising night, then it come, we came out way ahead. So you'll also have our draft. We shifted around a little bit what we're offering. For the sponsorships, it's not finalized yet, but based on what people liked, didn't like, found value in, we just adjusted for a little bit, so we've got to finalize that. That's kind of where we are as of our last meeting last week. So we ask for the approval for the businesses for review. Do you have any questions? Let me know.
Are you going to be reapproaching them, the other businesses as well?
Yes.
So all of the ones on the list will be approaching?
Yes. So it's a, it's an every year. We, we tell them that unless you want to be approached again, we will only contact you once, and that is the benefit of this. We're not going to contact you every time we have something that we need. It's once. Some of the businesses do opt back in because they like to donate stuff to the fundraising night, so a basket or something that their business makes. Generally, they stay opted out. At least this year they did, but we did have a few that, that opted back in.
Anybody have questions or concerns about the Booster Club plan?
Nope.
We still have a lot more businesses than we reviewed, which is nice.
There are. We, we discovered that we had missed some, but also last year we kind of, when we looked at our list, we said, who's likely to participate in the program? And this year I kind of took a little bit of a different approach, and I said, I don't care if they're going to participate or not, because if someone approaches us that they want to, that we necessarily send us again, weren't you, they're already get through. So this was just anybody who is local, you know? So we included quite a few more that were established businesses last year. We just didn't have on our list. But there are a few new ones, because we do have some new businesses in town, like the Clay Guy, Rye, Chapter in Charm. Miss Mc, Miss McPet, the New Story Clothing, Luminous Rose, um, three, or 137 May, which is in Marshall, um, the Fire Pizza, the Barbecue, so, yeah. So we'll see how it goes this year. The next year, you'll see someone else, so, because I'm, I'm done. My youngest will graduate, so. No, 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 it's very exciting.
You're like, I am.
I am not sad.
You'd always get a foreign exchange due to...
No, I could, but I will not.
You're like, I'm good.
I'm good, I'm done, so.
All right, well, we have action on that item later on the agenda, but if nobody asks us questions.
You have done your shit in that song.
Yeah. So you'll approve it later, or at least question, have the question up later?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
We don't have any students here. Building and Grounds Committee, so you guys want to give us an update about your committee meeting?
Well, I have not reviewed it, but we took a look into flooring in the, all right, I'll start with the 24 and 25. Total cost of $302,000. We're working on, egg building's almost complete, so that's really not on the list here. The whiteboard from room 106 is $1,200 plus. Chairs for the district office and some interior work, $5,000 some. Flooring, elementary schooling, that's not Tarazzo, $27,000, that's complete. Tile in the district hall, that's $13,000. Tile in the classrooms is $18,000. High jump mat, we approved that, and it's installed, almost $9,000. Air handling, $3,100. Earthscapes for their work on the track, P gravel mix, $1,600. Elementary playground fence, $2,300 is the best bet. Next one is almost twice as, there's one in there that was twice as much.
To install a fence around the elementary playground?
Yeah. Yeah, when I was 23, it was $41. Yeah. Elementary, get, perhaps getting a third band, Ewalt came in at $41,000. Climbing wall, there's some funding behind that as well. That comes in at $56,000, $98,000, and there's been a donation. Table saw with, with a break, $4,400. And then we got a master control update for the HVAC, $29,000. Elementary school water heater, $13,000. Yeah, additional exterior camera, $5,000. Paint walls, $10,000. Resale blacktop, $33,000. Art room renovation, working on that. Things to discuss, capital, door improvement, number nine, double inside doors, $11,000. Swordpike, so far, we'll see. We've heard about the swordpike, and that's the main things that came before the building and grounds, lots of discussion. Really need to work towards having a, a good PM budget so we don't end up with, or not bad, but we don't want to end up with everything being frail and frankly having to run out at the last minute and do some of that underlying work that you might have avoided if you could do it in a timely fashion. So we're coming along. So I propose this report would be, we have to accept it? Is this just a report? Just a report, all right. Then there's too much, Jeremy.
Nope, that sounded great, Charlie.
Thanks.
Sarah, any discussion about the Building and Grounds Committee meeting report?
For the flooring and the stuff that paint has POs on it, did that come to the board? For, like, did we get bids on it, or was that just something that was completed? I don't remember.
We did get bids, all right.
I was taking the action on that, so I thank for the information. Uh, the Finance Committee minutes, bullet point second. We had a very thorough presentation about health insurance and the state of health insurance for our employees. We know that we're going to see a pretty significant increase in that cost to the district coming up. Historically, we have used SSM or Dean Care for our primary carrier for health insurance, and they came back with a pretty significant percent increase for us for next year. Brown and Brown that we used to help with this insurance negotiation was going to go back for bids to potential competitors, for nothing else, to see if it gave us leverage with Dean Care to maybe drop by half a percent. They're at 0.7% increase they are proposing. I think we're just waiting for additional information from Brown and Brown regarding those additional bids, but so the board is aware there will be a significant financial impact associated with healthcare insurance.
Very good, Susan. That was not easy to endure. This guy, he just...
What if we just, if you're voting back and trying to...
To see if Dean Care, SSM will negotiate at all. They initially came to us with a greater than 10% increase, is that correct, Ms. Yurisiewski? Yeah, and initially then they cut it slightly. Um, Brown and Brown felt like if we went to bid with other companies, so really our only other options are UHD and Anthem. Of course, it's out there, but that would take almost all of our teachers out of network for their providers. So they were going to see what they could find in regards to bids from other agencies and see if that then gave us leverage to negotiate more with Dean Care.
And United Healthcare was not an option?
Yeah, United, UHD is United Healthcare. Okay, sorry.
It's okay. No, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure.
You're a limited abbreviation, sorry.
No, it's okay. No worries. Okay, got it. So then we'll, what are they looking to come back with something?
I think they have something to us by the June meeting.
The June meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Because when, when do we have to make that decision?
Um, every new is September 1st, so.
So we have a little bit.
Yeah, the summer month.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the initial bid from SSM, kind of there, SSM and Dean Care, I don't know how they go by in this world, is, was 10.9%, but they negotiated it down to 8.9. They were hoping maybe to get us just a little bit of loss off of that increase, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a big deal. Lots of good information. But we don't have any action related to that report either. Any other discussion about the Finance Committee or anything you think could omit?
Too surprising there.
Charlie, did you notice anything?
No.
Okay. All right. Sarah, that takes us to your, yeah, board report related to the law conference conflict of interest.
Yes, so after the law conference that we went to, was it in February, March, February? I don't remember. One of those months, I reached out to WASLA to find out about the conflict of interest because there was some stuff stated in the law conference that was in regards to conflict of interest, board members. And there's two statutes, which you guys both, everyone got the documents, so go ahead and review it when you can. Obviously, we got it tonight, so you're going to probably want to look at it, but with the statutes, it's come to my attention that with having the two statutes we're actually breaking right now, and it's the Code of Ethics and it's the Public Criminal Statute. The Code of Ethics is 1959, Wisconsin statute, and the Public Criminal Statute is 946.13, Wisconsin statute. So we definitely want to look at that as a board to make sure that we are not breaking those statutes. And so I would probably say we want to probably look at that a little bit, maybe onto the next meeting, but it's a pretty big deal.
So it's 1959 or what?
1959 is the Wisconsin statute, state code of ethics, and the Public Criminal Statute is 946.13.
I think also relevant, this conversation that Sarah's bringing up is the policies. And interestingly enough, both of the most relevant policies were in our packet with Miola updates, and so that would be policy 1130, Ethics and Conflict of Interest, and policy, uh, 4230, Ethics and Conflict of Interest. So both discuss how if you have a, if you were an immediate family member, have a financial interest associated with the district greater than $15,000, and you should exclude yourself from conversations associated with that compensation, or it is a violation of the statute that Sarah has indicated. So I think we have not been great at endorsing that our president excuse himself from those conversations due to his potential conflict of interest, and I think that is too...
Completely removed. No, they, they can't even be in the room, no conversation can be had, no voting, nothing. It is, has to completely remove and be removed from any type of conflict of interest, so for anything, contracts, anything.
That would be relevant to anybody who had a family member earning $15,000 or more in compensation in the district, so.
So can I ask you a question? Is that total salary or the raise, I guess?
No, to, like, total salary, so over 15, anything over $15,000 for who, you know, if it's a conflict of interest. So it's saying that it can be a conflict because there's a personal gain with, with being in those conversations, is what they're saying. So if that teacher, for any, anybody, if a teacher is making more than $15,000, then they're saying it's a personal gain, and they cannot be included in any of those conversations.
Now, if you look at point one of the Ethics and Conflict of Interest, bullet point A, it does kind of indicate that information clearly. I mean, it's in our policy, so. I think that that's why Sarah had asked to have it brought to the agenda. I think it was something I did not know prior to going to that meeting, their conference, and I found it very interesting. It also made me go back and look at E W two to make sure that I also was not in violation of this policy.
Yeah, and that's, and I brought that up considering I'm on the city and the school, but because I am on both, there's no personal gain for me being on both, and that's really why I dug into it, to find out for myself, so that I wouldn't make sure I was not going to be in trouble, or get in trouble, and I do not, so. Um, so that was something I wanted to bring up, so again, I did provide everything that they took up, and I believe she printed it all out, so take a look at it, let me know. Like I said, I've talked to WASLA, I've talked, I've got emails just to make sure I'm understanding it completely to the full extent. And then mental health.
I could, I just want to add one more point. If anybody has additional questions, Sarah and I did get several contacts at the law conference that did also welcome us to email them or ask them additional questions, so if anybody has additional questions, I think we'd be happy to share those contacts.
Appreciate that.
Right, Sarah, sorry.
Oh, yeah, so, yep, so then I just wanted to bring light of mental health and kind of talk about like mental health and our students, and I guess what our guidance counselors are doing, what our goals are. I don't know if we want to put this on as next meeting and like the new business to find out where we are with our mental health for our kids and see how we're doing, because I do think it's a, it's a big thing, and it's a big thing going on in our school, and it's happening with our kids, and I just want to make sure that we have goals set aside to make sure that, because our kids are here a lot, you know, they're here more hours than they are probably at home. So I want to, I want to see like if, if we don't have goals, what type of goals are we going to set up for mental health, because it is a really big thing, and it's not going away, so that's kind of my question on that. But it was not really a report, it was more of a question, but, yeah.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions or additional comment to that?
I look forward to further reading.
Yeah, you got a lot. I mean, the packet is that small.
This is what they gave you, I assume, at the...
Nope, that's actually, um, that was like given, but then I reached out, and then that's what they provided me with. So I reached out to WASLA, and that's, this is what they sent me.
Nice.
Yeah.
There were some slides from our presentation.
Yeah.
But they didn't have a handout for you.
They did, but they were all small boxes, you know, like how they do that, and so I wanted to make sure that I got the information, and this is what they sent me. So they sent me like, I don't know, it was like six or seven documents individual, so I sent it to Bob, and I think this is what it is for that she sent me, and like there was some highlight and stuff, so definitely, like I said, take a look and look at that.
Yeah, there's stuff in here about voluntary coaching as a board member, then, board member. It's essentially compatible. They don't, they don't mention that it's necessarily a violation of law. They say the Ethics Board has said that the board member serving involuntary coach for the district appears to violate the document compatibility. So, oh, I, I'm with Jeremy, I'll go over and read more on it.
Yeah, I think it's challenging in a small community, right, because those that are involved are often involved, and we find ourselves in situations that potentially do lead to a conflict of interest, and it's something that maybe we just need to be more cognizant of and excusing ourselves from certain conversations, not that you can't serve on the board, but that appreciating for you might have heard of mine. All right, moving on to administrative reports. Mr. Bartel, Portrait of a Graduate.
Good evening. Am I fitted with volume?
Yep.
Yeah.
Just a, just a brief update.
Just a, just a brief update. I know last month I talked about our work with our community network team that we created in Waterloo with our local businesses and colleges. We had that meeting about a month and a half ago, but now we have a design team, which is a quite a small team, about five local businesses, community members. And we are meeting next week, Tuesday, to really dive in and create our Portrait of a Graduate and looking at skills and attributes that our community business people are looking for, for when they employ others. Our meeting we had about two weeks ago, we really focused on what are those desired skills, what are those attributes that our community, our community members are looking for, our local business leaders. And now this meeting next week is about five of us that we will be sitting down and kind of mapping out what the Portrait of a Graduate looks like. We also coincide that with, we met with students, Mr. Boclean, Scott Collar about a week and a half ago. So we have a ninth to twelfth grade student team that is helping with this work and they went through that same process. We're meeting with our student team next week, Friday, after the community, to fine tune the Portrait of a Graduate. And then I will be working with our staff, once we create that, to make sure everyone's on board, tie up any loose ends. So we'll have a finished project, finished project here, hopefully by early June, so that, that's something we can start next year off of, that all of our students at Waterloo will be graduating with these skills, these attributes, and we'll have something to put out there. So when it comes to interviews for future, for positions in our districts, specifically the high school, that's something I could bring to the table and say, this is what we're about, this is what we are doing, and these are expectations from staff that we're guaranteeing every student locks out with. These are now negotiables. So I'm really looking forward to this work. I know we tried it early, or excuse me, late last summer, early fall, we just did not have the buy-in from the local businesses at that time, but we really are moving along in the right direction with our Portrait of a Graduate, and I hope to bring that to the table sometime this summer for all of us to look at.
Well, I'm excited to see it, Sean, I can speak for myself in that regard, yeah. Any questions for Mr. Bartel, Portrait of a Graduate?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Ms. Seaman for information about the Spanish resources.
Good evening. You have in your board packet information that I shared with District Curriculum Committee regarding some Spanish resources. If you remember, I had preluded a little bit that with the hiring of a new Spanish person, we would need to update our Spanish resources. And I have been working with Mrs. Milford and Mrs. Messerangelo, our new Spanish teacher, to preview some different resources. They narrowed their work down to two different resources. One is Authentico, it is a product from Savis. And the other one is Somos, which is from the comprehensible classroom. They are two very different resources. And after digging in a little bit, both teachers decided that they would like to pursue the Savis resource. It is very rigorous and it is all encompassing. It has a lot of what they were looking for as far as the scope and sequence to help build our Spanish curriculum. The other resource was more à la carte, and you would have to kind of piece together what you wanted for that curriculum. So they would like to go with Savis. I included in the board packet the table of contents of the spoken sequence, so you can see all the different areas that will be covered as students are using this resource from grades six all the way up through Spanish two or three in the high school. When the teachers got together, they did decide that because the resource is so dense, that they only wanted to use one textbook for three different grade levels and second textbook for Spanish two and three. So when they looked at all that was in the resource, they decided that grade six would cover chapters one through three, seventh grade would do chapters four through six, eighth grade would do chapters seven through nine, and that's in the Authentico one book. And Authentico two would have Spanish two covering chapters one through four, and Spanish three would do chapters five through nine. So another thing about this resource that is nice is that it does have an AP resource available. We're not quite at the point yet where we would have AP Spanish, but that could be available for us in future years. So because we are looking at only two textbooks for two, two textbook resources for two teachers, we have in a quote twenty-five hard copies of a classroom book for the Authentico one and twenty-five copies or a classroom set of Authentico two. And all the students that would be in Spanish would have digital access to the textbooks online as well as the student resources and student book pages. So if you see in your packet, the books and the workbooks with a one-year contract would be eleven thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars. We do want the professional development that is offered through the program, and that's an additional two thousand three hundred dollars. So the total for our Spanish resource would be thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-four plus shipping. Generally, when we contract with a new resource, we try to do a six-year contract with the company. When I spoke with the reps, they said that this resource is up for their renewal process, so they're hoping to kind of make their videos and their resources more current. So we decided that we would like to do a one-year contract so that we can see if they hold true on that promise and not be locked in for six years. Do you have any questions on the resource?
I have one. The way you're breaking up these chapters by each grade, is that something the teachers came up with on their own, or is it possible that they looked into how other districts are using this resource?
So when we talked to the rep, they do offer the Authentico one in an A, B version. And when we dug into what was offered in the different versions, they decided that they wanted to just break it up by chapters instead of doing version A in sixth grade and version B in seventh grade. They, the chapters are very thematic, so the teachers decided that they wanted to break up the chapters that way.
Thank you.
And if we choose to renew the contract after one year, what's the renewal cost of the contract, do you know?
We would not have to buy new textbooks unless they have new versions available. So it would just be renewing the digital components.
Do we have a cost breakdown between those two?
In the packet, um, I didn't put it in my slides, but I can get that to you if you would like.
I'd be curious.
I'd be curious.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I can, I have the quote with me, I can look it up, and before you guys decide on voting, I can let you know what that cost would be, if that would be okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then is this an actual instructor in class, or is this all online still?
No, it is an actual person. She has come to school a couple of times to help us look at the materials. She is super excited to be a Waterloo staff member, and she also is behind this resource.
So she'll be teaching the sixth through eighth grade and then Spanish two and three?
She will, she will be teaching high school Spanish and she will be doing six, eight ESL. DeMarx Milford will be doing our Spanish classes five, six, seven, and eight.
And then you, you made a comment that we would have the option for AP Spanish in the future, we're not quite ready. If we had a student that was able to do, I know we had previously offered an online option, will that still be available to students?
So we, we would want to have enough students for a class in order to run an AP session, but this resource does have those materials available.
Anybody else have questions about the Spanish curriculum? Thank you, Ms. Seaman.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Beacon, give us a summer school update, fun stuff. We can't hear you, Holly.
Can't hear you, Holly.
There. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to try to present my summer school update, so you're here, so hopefully everything works out. All right, can you see that?
Yes.
So so far, so we're, we're wrapping up. We have lots of things happening at the elementary school. We have our family event night coming up on June fourth. We're always really excited, it's a huge turnout of our families. We've added a cool party this year, so I wanted to put a little plug in for our family, elementary family night, because that's coming up. But we're right in the middle of, we're right near the end of summer school signup. We still have to get signed up every single day. Right now, if you look at my thing, is it gonna scroll for me? No. See, yep, I love technology, it's not working out for me. So you can see that, what do I need to do? Do I need to push, do I need to make it move? I don't know. Okay, so can you see the whole thing?
No.
Just the top part, Holly.
Just the top. Does anyone know how to make it move down, move down, move down, move down?
The little grid. Yeah, just grab it on your screen, not the Google Meet.
Uh-oh.
The grid, but they're on the right.
You guys.
Yeah.
Nope, it's not gonna work out. Anyway, so we have right now a total of a hundred and fifty students sign up for our regular morning summer school. We have a total of sixteen teachers teaching summer school classes this year. Total of thirty-five different classes, six of those classes having two sections. You can see summertime games, teamwork and sportsmanship, snack delicious, noodles and noodles, legos, and all sports. We also have our basketball camps that we're working on right now. They are, we have about sixty-one kids enrolled in three different basketball camps that are gonna be running from twelve-thirty until two every day. So that's very exciting for our kids. We, that was a very popular thing. We're hoping maybe next summer to get more camps going on. We also have that science enrichment camp for our fourth through eighth graders. We have thirteen students enroll, a different thing each day, forensic science, anatomy and physiology classes, and then that biotechnical. So every day is a different class during that first week of summer school, and that class is getting filled up really nicely. So that's exciting for our kids to be able to do that science enrichment camp. Jess Danks is really working hard on our strength and conditioning at our open gyms. So she, we have currently about twenty-four kids, we're really trying to get that number up a little bit higher, and the same with our open gyms for our seventh through twelfth graders. So those numbers are like in addition to the hundred and fifty that we already have. Some of them for like the basketball camp are kind of the same kids, but really for that strength and conditioning and that open gym, those are above and beyond our regular summer school numbers. But we're really excited, every day we still sign kids up, we're still trying to, you know, get everything as, as full as we can get it. So we're, we're excited about our summer program this year.
Good.
Harper's looking forward to it, she doesn't even know it yet, but she'll be there.
Any questions about summer school at all?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beacon.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, you guys.
Ms. Arvind Chop, we'll move on to your report about special education updates.
All right, good evening, everyone. Before I present on special education updates, I do want to offer to the board, Brian did share with me, Sarah, some of your questions surrounding mental health, so I was able to put it in this line as far as. Oh, sorry. Oh, that's okay, sorry. So if, if the board would like, I would be able to kind of give an overview on the mental health pieces, and then we can delve into that at another meeting, or I could save it for the next meeting, it's, it's completely up to the board.
I think it'd be beneficial to hear what you have, and then we could add other agenda items if we have more information we're seeing.
Okay, perfect, then I'm gonna present my screen and, and hope for the best with the technology. All right. Everyone able to see that?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to share with the board what Waterloo has been doing over the last handful of years surrounding mental health. I'm very proud of the work that our team does. The mental health is that piece in our multi-level systems of support. You know, we talked about in a previous meeting that our levels of support really kind of focus on three areas or buckets, academics, behavior, and then wellness or mental health. And so I know that Mr. Henning shared with me, Sarah, that the, the major questions that you were hoping to maybe touch upon are what are the plans in place right now? What are the plans or priorities we should set for upcoming school year? And then what are we doing to make sure our kids are not struggling alone with mental health? So I tried to do that here, focusing first on our current plans in place and making sure that our, that our kids are not struggling alone. So we, you know, we have a, of course, an informal referral process where teachers, anytime they have concerns, will reach out to our student services staff, that includes our school counselors, our school site, when they have concerns. But we also have some more formalized processes that we have been able to put into place. So we updated in 2022 our safe student protocol for students that are experiencing self-harm or suicidal ideation, so we have a whole protocol for our student services staff to follow and support when we have some of those more severe crisis situations. And then in 2022, our district team completed what's called the SHAPE Mental Health Assessment. I think Sarah was part of that team as well back, back in 2022. The team comes together and we go through a pretty extensive survey surrounding six components of mental health. And then we look at those results, and the team determined that they wanted to focus on teaming or collaboration. And then when we met again to kind of hone in, what, what is our focus going to be? The team decided that we wanted to improve our student support team or SST process district wise. And so we worked the entire school year on establishing structures and systems at each building level where we have a more intensive team of people, it's a more formal process. We bring data to the table, we look at that tiered intervention, the tier two or tier three, more intense intervention. You know, bring that data, progress monitor, and then follow up to see how those interventions are helping to support our students. To continue what's currently in place and how we ensure our students are supported, this year we added, you might remember, the Saber's Screener, which is a norm reference tool for screening students, to identify students who are at risk for social, emotional behavior problems. Our building principals and their teams did an excellent job on coming up with a process that they call Kids Connect. So if that screener. So if that screener flags a student that might have needs, um, those building leadership teams are coming together and they're making sure that each, uh, student has that person that they can count on in the staff. And so a staff member will sign up to make sure that they're connecting with that student, keeping extra eyes on that student, checking in on that student. So that's been, um, in year one, using that SABERS screener. Um, also just a reminder that we have increased our social, emotional learning resources pre-K-12. So we've updated our resources at elementary through middle school. And then high school added the School Connect resource so that we had that tier one or universal, um, support. And then we have really increased our connections with Jefferson County Human Resources. Um, and I believe, uh, each building has really worked to increase, making sure we connect families where students may be struggling with mental health so that they have, um, outside supports and services available and that we can connect those supports and services with our school team so that we can work together to really support that family, um, and student. And of course, we have our onsite Jefferson County, um, therapist, um, that we can use as a referral process so that a student can get, you know, therapy counseling support onsite, which can be really helpful for families. Um, again, continuing what we are currently doing to support, we have that daily checkout. Each building level does it a little differently, but the premise is the same. And basically, it's that daily checkout, um, from elementary through middle school for sure, where students are asked daily if they, if something's going on, if they feel the need to talk with somebody. Elementary teachers, uh, do it more verbally and, um, ISMS uses a daily form where they can click to either speak with Mrs. Seaman or Mr. Thorson, um, so that they can really have that immediate response. And then that information goes right to the, um, to the staff member. High school also has that same Google form, um, but what they have done is, um, Tyler, the high school school counselor, has gone into every English class to just show students and remind students of this resource where they find it. Um, and one of the things we reflected on is making sure that maybe at the high school level, we do that every term just to keep it, um, fresh in their minds as a resource. And then, um, one of the last things I wanted to highlight to the board, um, which was pretty exciting, is Cursman Federal Grant Money Project Aware was, um, offered to districts in Wisconsin as, um, a technical resource, consulting resource. Um, and we did apply for that and we have, um, been granted as one of the districts that gets to receive that additional support. Um, and so we've been meeting with the Project Aware team, um, since January. We've had three meetings and have a meeting coming up next week, um, with Dr. Elizabeth Freeman from DPI and Ted Knoll from CISA II. So basically, they just help us streamline our processes, uh, find out what we're doing and how they might be able to support, provide resources and things like that. Then to answer the question for plans and priorities for next year, so we're in the process of making that determination. Obviously, we continuously reflect on what we have going on now and how to improve that. So we'll look at how can we level up our SABERS as a resource and some of, some of the ways that we apply it. In year one, we're just kind of learning it and, and moving forward on that. Um, and then we are going to, we updated our SHAPE assessment. Again, that's about a 13-page report. Um, I included that graphic on there. Um, the SHAPE assessment really helps us looking at those components around, um, all the components of mental, that make up a comprehensive mental health system. Um, and so as a district team, we sat by building levels and went through the, the extensive questions surrounding each of those, um, domains. Um, and then what we will do next is we will take that report as a district team. We'll look over the results and then we'll select, again, an area of focus and then move into kind of a plan, do, study, act to determine what's our next best step as a district? And how are we going to, you know, what's the goal we're going to set? How are we going to monitor that and so on? So as far as, um, the next school year, uh, we have the data gathered. Our next step is to then take the team and determine, um, you know, our area of focus and what we want to do to kind of level up our system. And then the last one, I'm not going to spend a ton of time on because it's, it's, um, a little bit more on the dense, complicated side. But I did, I do want to just plant the seed to the board that this is going to be information that will be coming in the future. Um, again, we have this beautiful opportunity, um, through some federal grant money to get some additional training. Um, and so it's called the Neurosequential Model in Education. Um, and it's focused in Dr. Bruce Perry's work. He wrote a book with Oprah, What Happened to You? Um, really, um, focusing on trauma-informed practices. Um, I like to look at it as a brain-based, developmentally, um, informed perspective um, that really helps educators to understand student needs, behavior, you know, why do they act out sometimes? Why do they not, um, you know, connect to school? Why are they not performing to the levels that we want them to? And they really create this beautiful, um, understanding and visuals that will help educators. So right now, we're in the very early training stages. I was able to complete the trainer program, um, in January. It was about 100 hours of work. It was, um, a training that, um, had a cost of $4,000 that was covered by this grant. Um, and that allows me to share information with any of the schools in our district. Um, and then I'm currently in the advanced trainer course, uh, which I will complete next February, which is again, a $6,000 course that's fully covered by this, um, that then allows me to train staff members in our district to train others. Um, we have six members, including, um, Holly, that's completed the intro training. Um, and again, I just wanted to touch upon it to let you know that it's, you know, it's a really, um, cool opportunity for us. Um, and I plan to, um, explain this more to the board. So more to come as we move forward. So I know that was a lot, but again, I just wanted to give kind of that overview, um, to share with you because we've got a lot going on to support our students that I'm really proud of that our buildings and teams and staff have been participating in. Um, and if there's anything that caught your eye or that you'd want me to highlight in future meetings, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, I must say it sounds incredibly comprehensive. And all the various acronyms. Don't ask me to repeat it, but it's really broad, so broad-based and really, when I hear a daily check-ins, yeah, you know, nobody wants to come forward. We all know this, you know? How you doing? Okay, okay. Well, eventually you peel that on you bit by bit. So that's very, that's a very simple observation on my behalf. But, uh, congratulations to you and, and the others who secured some of this funding and, and to you for scrolling away in your corner there and, and leaning in on this.
Well, it's exciting work and it's, uh, it's big work and it takes a lot of people. And, um, our teams are just really, really, um, passionate and, and, and really do, um, support our students well. Again, we're always looking to up our game. We're looking for other ways how other districts do it. So again, it's a continuous improvement process. Um, but we will keep you posted as we move forward in the work.
Good job, Michelle.
Thank you. Um, all right, now I'll do my special ed update. I, I like to keep these short and sweet, but, um, I guess I'm talking more than typical. Sorry. I'll streamline this for us. So I did want to update the board on, um, what's going on in the world of special education in the last few months. So this highlights what we've been doing, um, pretty much March through May, just to kind of give you an overview. I did want to start with a little special education 101 because sometimes I hear, um, language being used and, and it, you know, I had a, a recent experience and it just made me think, you know what? It doesn't hurt to, to review some of those key philosophies and mindsets that we're working to, um, to either shift or solidify. And so I'd like to just, um, again, remind people that special education is a service. It's not a label. It's not a type of student. Um, you know, back in the day, I've been in education for a while. Back in the day, we used to say, oh, that's a special ed student or that's their student or, um, but really, students who receive special education are, are general education students first and by law are required to access, engage, and make progress in general education. Obviously, we have that 1% that have the, you know, the more severe cognitive disabilities that have alternate standards. Um, but again, we are looking to, um, educate all students, um, you know, with, with high rigor and high expectations. So I just, I like to highlight that. So in terms of updates, um, I had the wonderful opportunity of attending my, um, I'll say it out so that there's no more acronyms, Wisconsin Council of Administrators of Special Services. Um, I have to say, uh, to the board that I'm so grateful, um, that the district allows this support for me to attend this conference because, um, we have a fall and a spring conference and it's the only time where you get DPI, the lawyers, and a bunch of districts and directors all in one space. And, um, and then you can hash some things out. And sometimes people are saying the same things and sometimes they're not. So I have never walked away from WCAST conferences without ready-to-go, um, ideas to bring to my team. So again, I just wanted to highlight some of that for the board. Um, the focus at our spring conference, we spent quite a bit of time, um, with the Office of School Safety and the Department of Justice, talking about inclusive approaches to safety. Um, we were talking, uh, we were, uh, spent some time talking about maximizing special education funding. Um, of course, there's a lot of legislative updates, FIO four compliance, student discipline. And then, um, the legal council panel where we just talk about a variety of things. And, and in this one, we focused on shortened day in attendance and making sure that we're in compliance and, and following, um, what we need to follow. So again, I just wanted to highlight to the board some of those key pieces that I'm able to take away and bring back to our district and to our administrators and to our staff. Um, last week I had the opportunity to go to Oshkosh for the day for a Wisconsin statewide transition in-person networking. And we had four districts present, um, some of their Beyond 18 programming. Um, Oshkosh shared about their micro enterprises and small businesses that students are running. River Falls talked about post-secondary, um, education and transition. Lakeland talked about their Beyond 18 programming and Nicolay, um, focused on transition planning meetings. And then we had breakout sessions and this occurred all in one day. It was, it was a lot. They moved it very quickly. Um, where you just meet with different districts and you talk about your programming and how you're going to support students in transition, um, which, which starts at age 14 and then can go up through 21. So just to highlight, you know, the inspirations from that and, and from some of the, um, virtual networking meetings that I do monthly, Tuesday mornings at 7:00 AM with the, you know, with the statewide transition, um, programming. Um, in Waterloo, our goals for next year are going to include improving readiness and transition skills for our students, um, improving communication with families about transition and starting that conversation younger, um, and then improving connections with outside agencies. We also, um, these last months have met with, um, Wisconsin Statewide Parent Educator Initiative, another acronym for you. Um, so we had a meeting in March and, um, actually yesterday, um, with state and regional family school partnership coordinators, we did some reviewing on family engagement core beliefs. We reviewed our indicator eight family survey, um, which is a survey that students who, um, I'm sorry, a student or parents that have students that have IEPs, um, they take that every five years. Um, and so we took a look at those results. Um, and then we decided as a team that we planned to survey students, uh, or families of, who have students with IEPs, um, actually this month to gain feedback. We don't want to necessarily wait, um, every five years. We feel like that's important information to take on right away. So, um, we will be working with WISB, um, to develop that and send that out to students, or I'm sorry, to families, um, probably at the end of this week or early next week. Um, and then the last piece that I wanted to highlight that we've done in the last three months is, um, again tied to our ES3 grant, which is the Enhancing Social and Emotional Skills in Students with IEPs. We are wrapping up our first year with that grant. Um, and I plan to do a separate presentation later on how that went. Um, but one of the things I wanted to highlight is that we had three staff members participate in a three-day intensive paraprofessional Train the Trainers, um, training. Um, and the goal of that is to really help support our paraprofessionals and, and staff who work with paraprofessionals, um, to increase our strategies and resources for working with our students with unique needs and really focus on helping our students, uh, become independent. And sometimes when we have paraprofessionals or additional adult support, that can hinder a student's independence. So how do we really help our staff understand that the goal is to, when possible, fade that support, help build those skills so our students can become less reliant on additional adults and become more independent? So that team will be creating professional development and supports, um, for the next school year. And those are my special ed updates for the last few months. Any questions?
I have one question, Michelle, and then just one comment. The three-day intensive thing, the trainer program, where was that programming done for our paraprofessionals? Where did they participate in that?
Hmm, great question. So the Train the Trainers is, was a three-day virtual training that, that, um, two special educators and our occupational therapists volunteered to complete. Um, at the end of that training, uh, they worked with, you know, it was, um, collaborative and they worked with, um, other participants. And at the end of the training, they had to produce, um, a, a training that they then gave to our paraprofessionals at in-service. So, um, historically, um, and by historically, I mean since I've been here, so four years. Historically, we have used in-service or parts of in-service in the morning, um, when possible to train, uh, provide training and professional development for our paraprofessionals. Um, but we've also utilized, you know, giving coverage for a pair so that we can pull them into a brief 10, 15-minute team, um, meeting or coaching session. Um, and so again, they'll look into how that might look for next year depending on what's available to us. Um, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, perfect.
My other thought isn't really a question, more of a comment. But as you were talking, I was thinking how interesting it is, how fields cross over, right? So having worked in pediatrics for 20 years, 10 years ago, I went to an education on trauma-informed care. So it's interesting to see how that is now crossing into the education world, right? And probably has been for a while, but, and then, you know, in the last eight years, we've really worked with families on transitions for those chronically ill kids because transitioning from a pediatrician to an adult provider is pretty significant. So to hear that you're working on transitions from school, right there. So I think there's probably good resources to pull from outside of education that potentially have some history related to some of the topics that you're seeing come to the forefront. It's my opinion to that.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have questions for Michelle about her reports? All right. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that's a lot of information for us. All right. We'll move on to, um, approval of the bills and vouchers. You did have in your packet the review of the treasurer's report, the report of the superintendent's listings of disbursements, and the district receipts for the month of April. Does anybody have any questions related to those three documents?
I have reviewed them and I approve for approval of all three documents.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. All those in favor of the approval of all three reports?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is that a roll call vote?
Oh, wait, yeah.
That is a roll call vote. Thank you. Thank you, Travis.
Craig, yes.
Delphine, yes.
Bonnie, yes.
Ari, yes.
Cummings, yes.
All right. We have hit announcements. Charlie, you have an announcement for us.
I do. Uh, this past Friday, I got an email in the morning from Brian. It said no one on the board signed up for, uh, staff appreciation. up for staff appreciation, which you have some time available today to hand out to, for staff recognition. So I went home, put on clean clothes, came in, it was shortly before lunchtime, so I went down the hall with a cart of apparel for the elementary school teachers and Bez was with me and I, and then Brian was with me for the high school and middle school teachers later, working around the lunch hour and such, but I just have to say what a joy, total joy it was. The appreciation of the faculty, their pleasant manners, their appreciation for being here, that's what it was. Just huge amount of appreciation and glad to be here from them. And of course, I thank them for being here as well, but I just gave away feeling super about our hires and our administration are pulling it together. I totally, totally impressed. I'll quit there. Charlie, you're welcome.
Any other announcements? Public input? Is there anybody that wishes to give public inputs to the board?
Yes, Mrs. Sappalo. The boosters have a concern about allowing food in the fieldhouse. We thought that that was an issue that was covered last year and that we allowed it and then it was, there were signs everywhere in the fall saying that we no longer allow food in the fieldhouse. And that affects how we run our concession stand, which is a significant part of our budget. Our costs go up every year. We provide the onsite trainers for our events. So every event that we decided that was an important expense to maintain, it used to be a shared expense with the district, but budget cuts. Since we're all parents, we decided that was important enough for our kids to have that training support, but every year, kind of like your health insurance costs, they're very expensive. So was there some reason that we no longer allow food in the fieldhouse?
We took a vote and we voted against it.
Not everybody.
Not everybody, but as, as a board, the, it was put before the board and they, it did not pass.
It was, when, this was after?
This, this year.
This year.
Was there a time that we did allow food?
We did, we did a trial of it at the end of last year. And we did vote to do a trial associated with that, but it was a very short-run trial.
Like one event?
Similar to one, I would say.
Because there are very few events in the spring and I know that last year, the reason it came up was because of the collegiate event. And then we don't really have events in the spring inside. And then by the time we reached volleyball season in the fall, it was disallowed again.
How was that negatively affecting the revenue?
So when you don't allow food in the fieldhouse, people have to eat whatever it is in the cafeteria space that they purchased and a lot of these games are five-thirty, six-thirty, you know, they're during the dinner hour. But they would have to eat that food in that space and not be able to see the game that they're there to see.
So it's a noticeable difference to you?
It is a noticeable difference because people have to eat it quickly or what ends up happening is the only people that are being essentially affected by that are the rule followers because those people aren't going to take food in the fieldhouse because they know they're not supposed to. But people who don't care about the rules take food in there anyway and a lot of times nobody says anything. So if you are going to follow the rules, you can't have food in the fieldhouse. If you aren't, then you get it anyway because you take it in and nobody says anything. So. So it's a, it's a tough balance.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you wanted to, just so you know, like the entire custodial staff that we listened to that day was resumely against having food, obvious reasons, but it's good to hear a different perspective and I'm glad for that.
I think it was trying to keep up, fall up until January, so I mean, they had the first.
No.
No.
The signs were up in volleyball season.
Yeah, it was up in September.
So.
The TV is not working.
Correct, which the boosters bought and installed. And it was supposed to alleviate some of that so that we could stream whatever game was in the fieldhouse in that cafeteria area and it is rare and working. It usually just has the announcements of the day, flip it through, just like during the school day. So we're not exactly sure how to get that to, to work. I mean, it's a good alternative. It's not the same, especially as a parent. If you are there to see your child, you want to be able to see them, to root for them and have them cringe when you yell at them. Good job, Kim. But it's, it's not working either. So it's, it's not an effective alternative.
Thank you. It is something that we can certainly add to a future agenda for discussion. Is there anybody else that wants to provide public input? We are moving on to new business. We have some action items that were in your board packet, the first of which is staff positions. There was one noted correction that Mr. Henn made to remove Avery Peachey from our summer custodian hires and replace him with Kayden Bird as a summer custodian. Any questions about staff positions or comments?
I'll move to approve. I will second.
All those in favor of approving the staff positions as presented with this amended Avery Kayden?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next action item we have is from the Waterloo Athletic Booster Club fundraiser. Just Sappalo gave us a nice presentation on that. Is there any additional discussion or questions about that fundraiser?
Cummings will make a motion to approve the Waterloo Athletic Booster Club fundraiser.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Waterloo Athletic Booster Club fundraiser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Then we have an action item related to the Building and Grounds Committee items. So this was related to the 2024, 2025 projects. The committee is recommending the district complete the project yet this year in order to strain, avoid strain on the budget. Then it says, Suthi, will talk us through the projects.
Charlie kind of already did. Does everybody have a copy of the?
Yeah.
Do you even have questions? I've got the copies of the POs and the quotes that I have here. I've got Ena's POs just as kind of a placeholder in my budget for this year to kind of in accordance with the cost. Did you have any questions on them?
I have one just because I'm forgetful. How far around was this fence going to go for the elementary playground?
So it does not fully come around. It goes from the entrance of the building, so the wall where the bus lane is, down to Porter Street, leaving, not Porter Street, what's that street?
Porter Street.
Porter Street, okay, leaving room for plowing and then coming down along the sidewalk. I think we had it coming just a little bit. So we just, we went back and forth, just a little bit, right? And just to rid of the fields, but it does not cut all the way down. But that stops a lot of the runners, so at least it's blocking a lot of that off, so.
Which side of the sidewalk by the bus lane is it on?
Oh, the inside. Because it's sidewalk straight to.
Yeah, sidewalk bus lane, is it going between the sidewalk and the bus lane or on the?
Inside.
On the grass.
On the grass.
On the grass, thank you.
Yep. And that quote, it's a huge difference, it was apples to apples.
Yep.
Completely the same.
So the request for this action is for the total cost of $302,000? Is that what the motion would be for this or?
No, the majority of that list has been completed. We're largely targeting the last four items on that list, which is the playground fence, the van, the wall, and the table saw.
There you go. Keep it up there.
So in, you know, we're, we're at that time of the year where, you know, we're looking to get these items into this year's budget, which means that the expenditures need to be completed by June 30th. So we have hard quotes for the fence and we have hard quotes for the van and for the saw. We don't necessarily on the wall yet because there was some engineering that needed to be done in order to get that. So we'd like to see the board make the motion for a not to exceed amount. And then as we receive that information, that will allow the administration to move forward, knowing that we stay under the number you've given us to stay under.
And the $10,000 already donated for the wall, where did that, where did that come from, just for my general knowledge?
That came from our social media management company.
Anybody else have questions about the Building and Grounds Committee?
The climbing wall is a pretty big range there. What's the amount that you're hoping we would say the not to exceed? Is it the $98,000? That's probably what it's going to be more towards, yeah. Yeah, that would be based on the engineering, so.
Can I make some discussion on why we have a climbing wall?
It's been approved several times. We just haven't pulled the trigger. We just haven't done it. And we did have it, we have inspected every year, have trained on, and the old one, several pieces are breaking down.
Oh, yeah, the, so this is to basically redo an existing climbing wall?
To replace the one that's in the elementary gym.
Okay.
And, and create that new one because.
Yeah, oh, that's what going to the fieldhouse.
Yeah, to go to the fieldhouse.
So we're going to basically discontinue the one that's on the elementary and we're going to create a.
Yes.
Nice shiny new one that we're closing.
And it's, the climbing wall is used like in physical education, they use it in that environment?
It's part of the P E curriculum. Very popular.
Is it ever used for anything else?
You have to have certified people, obviously, control the valet points, so, you know, not just anybody can walk up and use it, but it certainly could be used for recreational things, you just need to get those certified people to be there, oversee it.
Anybody want to make the motion related to the 2024, 2025 additional expenses related to Building and Grounds?
I will so move for approval as presented, with the to not exceed of the higher figure listed.
Regarding the climbing wall?
Correct.
And smaller of the two quotes on the fence is right.
Yes, the one that has PO already.
Correct, yeah.
So I believe we have a motion on the floor to approve the elementary playground fence at the lower quoted price, the, the van at the quoted price, the table saw at the quoted price, and the climbing wall, but not to exceed a cost greater than $98,000. Do I have that? Motion correct.
Yes.
I will second that.
All right, is there a second to that?
I'll say it.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of the Building and Grounds Committee cost for the 2024, 2025 budget?
Aye.
We haven't even got to do a roll call, considering how much we're. I think so. I don't know, we, we typically wouldn't do.
Okay.
Others, just because how much.
Well, we will do a roll call vote on that.
All right, Craig, yes. Phil, yes?
Connie, yes.
Ari, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Very good. Repair of the practice and game football field. So we have some information in our informer packet with a request associated with our football fields and some concerns regarding taking on that repair and the timing of our football season. Is there additional discussion about this action item?
Brian, do you feel we should be doing it or it won't be ready by fall?
Well, I think it's, you know, this is a safety issue, so it definitely should be something we should be considering doing, although you, you know, we could get some more information on the yardage of soil that was included in the bed and, you know, we're talking about a couple dump trucks of soil, so I have some skepticism about how much good we can do for a couple dump trucks of, of soil, but nonetheless, any improvement is, is an improvement. I'm just worried that if we do it now, you know, that grass takes a long time to mature and put down roots that, you know, come football season, which starts August 1st, so we're a little over two months away, you know, it's going to all be for nothing because it will just get tore right back out. So it can be done and again, it's a safety issue, but you might be throwing money that is wasted if it all gets tore right back out because it's not developed enough to last through the football season.
Yeah, if we put it in come November or something, would it, would it take enough root to, well, probably it'd be taking root right now, but with the.
Well, yeah, it would hopefully, you know, maybe probably take root in the fall, but if not, at least it's there and in place for early start in the spring, which is more like a March and early April, except for late May, technically three, four, five months time instead of just two.
So we're going to just put gravel and sand? Is that what we're going to be, or peat gravel and sand into it? Is that what we're doing? No, that's going to, just are, are we going to have them roll it? Are they going to get it rolled and make sure, I don't know, like that's what we did with our soccer fields? We have to roll it.
That's not going to be the time of the day.
No, but when you put it down, you probably want to roll it so that it cats it, so that it really gets there and then we're going to have to water it and then do that whole, and then seed it and it's, it's a whole process. So I don't know if it can be done in two months, but you can definitely, for the divots and what they say, the holes in the divots, I mean, we could fill those essentially and they may have a little grass in two months if we do it properly and we do it correct. If we have a company doing it, hopefully they do all those steps.
I, I have a feeling we should just put some soil in there, get through the season and then go back soon as season is over and incorporate the grass and straw or whatever they need to do.
You can't just plant on the field.
Right, correct.
You're going to put soil, but you got to put grass seed.
Yeah, you got to put grass seed, so if you're going to fill them, fill them, but then put grass seed, but then we're going to have to water it to make sure that there's some grass and it's not just mud because that becomes a whole different situation. Then you're really ruining the grass.
Yeah.
Huh? Could you top dress? You could for temporary solution, yeah.
If we don't do this work, what are the safety concerns for students on that field in the fall?
Well, if you remember, Coach Chinky was the one that originally reached out to the board and was requesting the work because he had several players that were injured last year from the holes in the divots, foots and ankles and knees and stuff.
I mean, that's a pretty significant risk charge, right?
I, I don't see any reason why you can't grow grass in two months.
Yeah.
I, I put in months and, and get a, a grass in two months.
I don't think it.
Depends on how much seed you.
It depends on which seed you use, so.
I don't think it's a question of growing it. I think it's a question of it lasting through the season.
Yeah.
Probably won't last because the root structure won't be there between now and first part of August. But it's better than nothing.
And this is, this proposed repair is money that the football team is willing to fundraise to support? Is that correct?
That's what Coach Genke says. I don't know if he's intending on using the money he has in his account now to get the project going fast and then replenish it through a fundraiser down the road or if he wants to actually go out and fundraise and then allocate that money to this. So that, that would obviously hinder the tiny portion of it as well. But I'm guessing he'd like to get at it sooner rather than later, so.
I mean, if we're going to do it, they should lay in a very plenty of seed for any hope of grass, right? But if we're not going to do it, then they have plenty of time to raise funds and we do it later. So I guess it's up to the board on how they think we best move this project forward.
We're going, there is a point if we had to do it now. And like I said, we can just lay it and then not water it. Then it literally will die and then it will really be pointless.
And I think that's additional cost that the board needs to consider as well, right? Watering, but we don't have water out there, do we?
Well, the football field does, but the game field has a sprinkler system, but not the practice field.
And who's going to do that?
Well, on the, on the practice field, you just, you cover it. You put straw up on the top of it and it keeps the soil relatively moist. And when it rains, it stays moist for longer. It's the only reason that people cover.
With a strong one.
Yeah, that's why we're down for that.
And the quote from Earthscape includes the work or just the, the dirt?
No, the installation.
Dirt, seed, and what they call an excrement.
And so they're showing the practice field and the game field is what they're saying.
Oh, it does have games go down there too.
Ten yards. Yeah, and then they're saying top floor and then seed.
All right, so I'm going to vote to, yeah, Earthscape's go ahead and do the work. The football team making significant efforts to, I don't want to say it, hundred percent, because it might be disappointing, but you contribute significantly towards this. Do it sooner than later for safety concerns and for the coaching staff to take into condition the condition of the, the work for their scheduling. In other words, the grass gets muddy out and this new grass don't go out there.
What about letting the youth programs use the fields?
Go up to the park.
Well, they, they have always, the high school has been pretty, pretty clear about when they're using it or they don't think the youth program should use it. They make it pretty clear that they don't want us to, we just don't. Or we have it in the past, W I S O had it.
Charlie, were you making a motion regarding this or were you just voicing your opinion just about it?
That's a motion. Keep it moving. You can vote it down if you don't want to.
So you're moving to move forward with the proposed work put forward by the varsity football team related to the improvements on the.
Them paying for it?
And the vote associated with that work.
Correct.
And then fundraising to cover the cost.
Yeah.
So if they don't have the money now, do you want them to move forward?
If it's a safety issue, I mean, we're, we should be paying for it.
Get the players out there to spread the soil and put the seed down and water it. That's what they give them. When my brother was in school, they built the whole thing. Sounds kind of crude, but, you know, I hate to say it, but we hear about safety concerns on every sporting event. Well, if it's, is that dangerous, then you're going to have to step up to help fix it.
I'm going to ask you just to clarify your motion, Charlie, just so I'm clear.
Either they fundraise or they put it in themselves. They want it fixed.
If they can pay for it, they can do it.
Yeah.
So they have to have the money upfront to be able to move forward?
Yeah, or a rock solid plan.
Okay, so the way I understand your motion is that you would move to move forward with the improvements to the practice and game field that is proposed in this document as long as the football field or the football team's fundraising funds are available to cover the cost?
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll propose another motion.
Okay.
I'll prove it as submitted with the school paying for it and if the football team has the funds to reimburse it at a later date, God bless them.
So we did not receive a second to Charlie's motion. We have a, an amended version of that motion on the floor proposing that we move forward with the improvements to our practice and game field as proposed in our packet with the school covering the initial cost and the football team's fundraising reimbursing the school for that cost.
You go back here, yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I would second that really quick. Brian, do you truly feel that it is a safety concern out there right now with how the fields are? I, I, I want to make sure that if it's truly a safety, then we, as a school, we need to make sure we take care of that. If you feel that there is safety issues.
I do feel that there's safety issues and that's been reiterated by the head coach himself, so I don't know why we would argue with that.
Then I will second my motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor regarding this proposal of the practice and game fields, the school covering the cost being reimbursed by football fundraising. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, so that here.
Where do you want us to get the money from for that?
That's a good question.
I mean, it feels like it's building and grounds.
It's, yep, I was going to say, do we have any money in our building and grounds or? Because that would be like, and that's about seven thousand, is that what?
No, it's more than that, probably closer to eight, eighty-five.
Yeah, so forty-seven is thirty-six, yeah, so.
Yeah, they only have like fifty-one hundred.
Football, that's.
Yeah, football.
Okay, so do we take the fifty-one hundred from the football budget and then the rest from somewhere else? I don't, I don't know if that's the best thing or does that leave football with nothing? And then that's on a revenue?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I don't know what their other expenditures are for the year, but.
I always let you know, I just ran the report.
Want us to take it out of fund balance in the meantime?
Yeah, I don't think. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right. Now we will move on to action item E of the agenda, merging of building code two hundred and three hundred. Got some information in our board informer regarding this request. This is regarding our state report cards and P I reporting.
I move to approve the recommendation to consolidate the building codes into one code for grades five through eight.
Is there a second to Mr. Craig's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to merge building code two hundred and three hundred?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, moving on to action item F is our Spanish curriculum. We had a nice presentation regarding the updates to our Spanish curriculum. Are there any questions that weren't addressed during our presentation from Ms. Eman?
Would you like me to show the breakout of costs at this time or not?
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
All right, I am going to try to share my screen. And it's going to be small, so I apologize for that. But in, in this breakout, you will see a hundred and forty digital courseware licenses for thirty-five dollars a piece. And then you will see twenty-five digital course and student edition. So the, the package with the hard textbooks is twenty-five dollar or twenty-five as a quantity and we get the digital version with that as well. Because we are only asking for twenty-five hardcover textbooks, we have additional digital licenses for the other students. So the digital licenses are about thirty-five dollars a piece per student.
And that would be our cost moving forward for the following year if we stick with this curriculum, correct?
Correct, depending on the number of students. So you'll see level two, the digital edition is a little less, twenty-nine dollars, I believe. So it depends on the level.
And then if we decide to maintain this curriculum, is there an opportunity for us to do more than a one-year renewal with it? Where it's less of a cost to the district?
Correct, yes.
Anybody else have questions regarding that Spanish curriculum?
Cummings will make a motion to approve the Spanish curriculum that was presented.
Craig will second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the Spanish curriculum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Our next action item is the action item of the Neola policy updates. We had several policies come to us from Neola. I'm assuming this is one of their quarterly updates, Brian, that we received. There were several policies written. One of them looks like they were completely eliminating a policy.
Yeah, there is some, some updates, some resins, some new ones. Well, not completely new, but new ones to replace the rescinded ones.
Some of the rescinded ones I assume were related to changes in federal policy, so.
So there, there was one item that I wanted to mention. The administrative team had a chance to look at that third grade retention. One a little bit closer. So we're required to have the policy, and that has to do with the Act Twenty reading plan stuff that you're hearing so much about in the news. We're required to get a policy in place by July first, two thousand twenty-five, and that, that would meet this requirement. However, as a district, we're not necessarily ramped up enough to deal or facilitate that policy to the fullest extent yet. So the D P I has come out and given districts some flexibility to, you know, get the policy in place, but then they've been afforded a couple of years to enforce the policy. So we have until Janu-, July of two thousand twenty-seven to fully implement that policy. So it, it's in your packets as being, you know, presented as of July first and being implemented as of July first, two thousand twenty-five. But I think the administrative team would like it if they could work towards that over the next year or maybe two in order to get that fully implemented.
Brian, could you offer to us some, some more specifics around where the district has some additional work to figure out?
Yeah, so we're not necessarily prepared to, so the, the policy states that any student that has not fulfilled their reading goals through their Act Twenty reading plan, that there's some, you know, a requirement that we need to talk about retention of the students. And so we're not necessarily geared up to have those discussions with those kids and parents about routineing them for those classes. It's the first year, like you've only had those plans in place for less than six months. So we certainly understand that we have more work to do and there are kids that won't meet those criteria at the end of this year, but we don't necessarily want to schedule meetings to talk about retention with parents when we've only been working on that for such a short period of time. So it doesn't exclude us from having those conversations and certainly the communication to the parents will still be a part of it. But, you know, a year from now or two years from now, we'd be better suited to facilitate that. And again, the D P I does allow for that to take place.
Is it your recommendation then, as a board, we would approve these amended Neola policies with the exception of that policy or that we would put timing around?
I think if you just want to give us a timing, I mean, I think it'd be, we, we'd ask for two years, but if you tell us to have it ready a year from now, we'll, we'll do it either way, so.
So this pretty much, this one for the third grade is pretty much saying that if they're not at the reading plan, they, we can essentially not promote them to fourth grade?
Correct. So and I, I know that, you know, that's, on paper, that some of it makes sense, but when you just received the requirement to provide these reading plans and we've spent such a short time working on them, it just, the numbers are much larger than, I think, you know, you want it intended when the policies and the legislation was passed. So we just need time to work with those kids and get those numbers down.
I certainly don't have any problem with what you're requesting. I'm wondering how it's noted, like how would that be noted on our website regarding this policy?
We would just write it into the policy that this is the district's plan that would be fully implemented by July of two thousand twenty-six or July of two thousand twenty-seven.
So like you're just pretty much saying, we want it for like another year to really hone in on how many kids are on this reading program?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just some light reading there with about forty policies for all of us. Is there a motion related to the Neola policy updates?
I'll, I'll approve them as presented with the addition of the changes that Brian just referenced.
Yeah, I will second that.
Okay, so we have a motion regarding the Neola policies on the floor. All those in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? There you go. Okay, our last item here before we go to closed session is discussion regarding graduation. Is there anything specific we were looking to discuss regarding?
I think we had the four of you down to present. Charlie, Jeremy, Susan, and Sarah. So if they're, if that's the final, final version, then we'll get the program.
Then you're not going to do it?
Print it. We, we just never want to leave anybody out, but we always have to know what kind of.
He doesn't.
It'll be there pretty far in advance, so we can print the programs.
Yeah, also.
I'm right there.
All right.
So if anybody does change their mind and decide to come, you just won't be in the program.
All right, with that being our final item, then I will make the motion to move us into closed session. And that is pursuant of this contest status statute nineteen point eight three current non currency current. That we might move into closed session for the purpose of discussion of potential action concerning employment performance evaluation and data of employees. And that is, I need a second to that motion. And then roll call vote.
Craig, yes.
Dolphin, yes?
Plummer, yes.
Cory, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Very good. We will take a ten-minute break to take down the cameras and make it closed session.